We will now call the common council meeting of April 5th, 2021 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Duke Neack.
Here.
Alderman Tillman is excused. Alderman Gale.
Here.
Guzakowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the pledge. President Gale, you want to start us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Before we do the approval of minutes, I would ask that the clerk read in the notice of video conferencing.
Certainly, the city of Oak Creek is authorized to hold this public meeting remotely during the COVID-19 public health emergency. This meeting being conducted via Zoom video conference with telephone conferencing capabilities was duly noticed per the city of Oak Creek municipal code and statutory notice requirements more than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Members of the public have been advised of the options for participation. This meeting may also be viewed at the city's YouTube page, the link for which was contained in all aforementioned notice methods. The meeting recording will also be accessible on the city's YouTube page within 48 hours. When unmuted, all participants must state their name and address for the record, then proceed with comments or questions. Questions and comments may also be entered into the Q and A function within the Zoom webinar control panel. Staff and/or the moderator will monitor this function during the meeting and provide the information requested. There is one or more public scheduled, public hearings scheduled as part of this meeting. After the mayor announces the public hearing, staff will read the public hearing notice into the record, state that the hearing is open and subject to the meeting procedure, and provide a brief overview of the proposal. The chair will then proceed with the hearing by making calls for public comment. Following the third call for public comment, the chair will close the public hearing and proceed to consideration of the remaining agenda items.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
That will get us to the approval of minutes of 3:16, 2021. If everybody please take a look. And when you are satisfied, there's no errors, omissions, questions, or comments, we'll take a motion. Kerkowski make a motion to approve the minutes of March 16, 2021.
FedEx second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Neack.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
And item four is recognition. It's a mural proclamation for National Library Week 2021. And again, I will ask the clerk to please read that into record.
Certainly, may all proclamation National Library Week 2021 proclamation. Whereas National Library Week has been sponsored by the American Library Association since 1958, is a national, national observance of libraries across the country and is a time to celebrate the contributions of our nation's libraries and librarians and to promote library use and support. Whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses, serving their communities. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of belonging and community. Whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building and everyone is welcome to use their resources. Whereas for people lacking broadband at home, libraries provide access to computers and Wi-Fi, even checking out Internet hotspots and laptops. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access to all. Whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia content, and educational programs. Whereas in times of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually. Whereas in times of change and challenges for individuals, communities, and institutions adapting to COVID-19 emergency measures, the Oak Creek Public Library leveraged technology and staff ingenuity to provide those that they serve would take out resources, virtual activities, and digital content to meet their educational and recreational needs, even while physical facilities were closed or limited. Whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing, continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dan Bukiewicz, mayor of Oak Creek, proclaim April 4th through 10th, 2021, National Library Week to be a time to honor libraries and library staff in Oak Creek dated this 5th day of April, 2021.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
And with us is our head librarian Jill Lineiger. Jill, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. So just given the crazy year that we've had, I just wanted to use the opportunity of National Library Week really to send a great big thank you to the library staff for all the amazing jobs that they have done over the past year, really leaning in to the challenges and changes that we've all been facing and using their creativity to make sure that the library, that the residents in Oak Creek still had access to our services and our programs. Over the past 12 months, the staff have reviewed every library service that we have offered and have done their best to make sure that those services were available either virtually or in a takeout format. And so for that, I just want to thank everyone and wish you all a happy National Library Week.
Thank you, Jill. Council members, anybody? Chris?
I just want to say thank you to the staff and everybody at the Oak Creek Library. They're really just invaluable when you look in the totality, holistically, what, what you bring to the city. And sometimes we, it goes unnoticed. So I'm glad that this week is, is your week and I'm glad the mayor did this. So thank you for all the work you guys do.
Thank you.
Steve?
Alderman Kerkowski, I, I just recall that when we built a new library, there was a, not a ton of people, but there are a lot of people questioned as to why we needed such a big library, or even if we needed a library at all. And Jill, I think you certainly proved that, that we, we need a library and it's, it's been very successful. I think your business has even gotten better since we've had the new library. So congratulations and good job.
Thanks.
You know, just, just to get on what Chris said, the staff is amazing. They've been flexible. They've adapted to anything that's come their way, whether from the old building to the new. That library was built to bring community together and you really have done that. It is, when we're here at night, you can see the people in normal times coming and going. And it's really a source of pride for Oak Creek. So congratulations and again, enjoy National Library Week and pass that on to your staff.
I will do that.
Okay, no motion needed on that, correct? Okay, thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
That will get us to our first public hearing in his consideration of a conditional use submitted by Dave Doro on behalf of Kamatsu to allow for some storage crates on the property at 1,000, 10,001 South Howell Avenue. Catherine, would you please read that in the record?
Certainly, public hearing number one is to consider a request by Dave Doro, OC Holdings LLC, on behalf of Kamatsu for a conditional use permit to allow for outdoor storage crates on the property at 10001 South Howell Avenue. Applicant is Dave Doro, OC Holdings LLC, on behalf of Kamatsu, property owner, OC Holdings LLC. Therefore, as the legal description, date of notice, February 24th, 2021.
Great, thank you, Catherine. Doug, would you like to give us a synopsis?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, my name is Doug Seymour. I'm the director of community development for the City of Oak Creek. I'm pleased to be live and in person tonight presenting these public hearings to you, the first of which being a conditional use permit request for outdoor storage for the property 10001 South Howell Avenue currently occupied by Kamatsu. And this conditional use permit request is for the outdoor storage of crated parts and products on some additional roughly two and a half acres of asphalt to the south and west of their current facility. The crates would be stored to a height of seven feet and within designated and painted storage areas, the aisles would be kept clear and designated just for fire protection purposes, what have you. The entire area for storage would also be kind of contained within an exterior curb and gutter. The, the piles or the crates themselves would be anywhere up to seven feet in height and that's just a function of the containers themselves that this is, these are storing parts that are either being sent out or coming in for the, for the facility. This is a consolidation, I should, I failed to mention, of several of their facilities in the Milwaukee area. And we're happy that, you know, the Oak Creek facility is doing well and, and they're looking for alternatives to expand that. That being said, staff did have some initial concerns and certainly the planning commission had some initial concerns about the plans to essentially have that amount of outdoor storage in that area. And as such, brought those forward to the planning commission. And over the course of several meetings, the planning commission did discuss and actually take action and recommend certain measures that would mitigate some of the impacts of that. For instance, the requirement for a landscaping plan for additional grooming to the north, for restrictions on lighting, for restrictions on height of the stored product for landscaping within or adjacent to fence line on the south and the west and certainly landscaping on Howell Avenue. So I can kind of see some of the issues and feel free and we can certainly go into detail and over any aspect of the, the proposed site plan. But just to summarize it, I mean, they have really kind of worked very well and have approached the city and the neighborhood and in terms of trying to really work on those areas which would have had some, some impact to the neighborhood. And as part of that, the planning commission felt comfortable in recommending approval of the conditional use permit. So this is a public hearing and I request anyone who's got any questions or comments, whether you're in person here at city hall or in the queue to, once, once you are recognized, please give your name, address, and proceed to address your comments or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug said, this is public hearing. This will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium. Name and address then for the record, please.
Mike Bania, 9828 South Deer Path Drive. So my property is very close to this where this is going to be proposed. I guess one of the things I had not heard any conditional use as far as access to these crates. At night, I hear nothing but beeping, beeping, beeping all hours of night from what I'm assuming are vehicles, because you can't see it, are vehicles that, you know, when they go in reverse, they get that beeping sound? I don't know if it is that, but I'm assuming that's what it is every night. And so I don't know if it's possible to put any sort of conditional access that they don't do it at night, because I can just imagine if we're going to expand that, there's just going to be so much more. And it's, it's troubling when you wake up at 2:00 in the morning and there's this beeping going on. It's constantly, it's hard to fall asleep. And that's during the winter. When the summer comes along.
We have the applicants with us. They, they may be with us online and be able to queue in.
You do have that project engineer. Kevin, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Am I unmuted?
Will you do a name and address for the record?
My name is Kevin Rish, 8308 47th Avenue, Kenosha, Wisconsin, 53142. I represent the owner, Dave Doro, who has tenants of Kamatsu. I'm not sure what, what hours and what their operational timings are for that facility, but I think everyone is aware that there's multiple facilities next to each other there with, that deals with trucks. So I, I can't pinpoint whether it's this site or it's the neighboring sites to the south.
And neither can I. I have no idea. I just hear it.
Like, yeah, I don't, I can't tell if they're from FedEx or.
Yeah, I have no idea.
But I know hours of operation when I talked to the owner.
Sorry, anyway.
No, go ahead, Ken.
I understand hours of operation were primarily like seven in the morning until seven at night. From my, my recollection, I could be wrong, but I don't remember if there is a condition or restriction in here, Doug, on hours of operation or not.
You know, I'm looking at that. I don't see anything about hours of operation because I don't think that was really brought up as an issue.
No, we, we did not discuss because really it was more for storage and any loading was going to go on the south side, not that that would not be able to be heard.
I guess I will say with respect to if it is a FedEx issue, I mean, they have their separate own conditional use permit. And I thought we had put in some provision with respect to backup pull arms.
I know they, we had, we had asked because OSHA requires them, so they can't do without them. That's one unfortunate problem. But I sympathize with you because I have actually recently heard them myself overnight. But I can't tell where they're coming from exactly either.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't gone out at night to look and see what's going on. I look kind of weird sitting on a berm up there.
But I do recall my conversation with the owner that their hours of operation were not generally overnight.
So if they're, so if Kamatsu is not the organization that, and their hours of operation will not affect the concern that I have, how do I, as a citizen in Oak Creek, voice a concern about that noise at night to find out who is it?
Oh, you took the first step, you talk, you're all in. So that's the first step.
So we don't know if it's Susie's, his deliveries or, or Kamatsu or FedEx. I mean, or it could be for that matter, gee, medical, yeah, on the corner. We'd have to do a little investigating and see that, Mike. But the, the backup, the backup beeps unfortunate are.
Yeah, and that I understand. It's just, it's annoying. It's, it's just every night, it seems. It's every night, so that was my concern.
And Doug is correct, at planning, we never really got into the hours of operations because they weren't going to change. So if the, whatever's going on now, you know, of course, it's going to be a different setup. It will be different. But it was our understanding, these are finished product just being stored, waiting to be loaded on the trucks to go. It didn't sound like they were going to do this at night, but again, I can't say that for sure. We'd have to reach out to Kamatsu and, and do that, but I'd be surprised if they were.
I guess I would appreciate that because if it's not them and it's somebody else, anything they would do would just add to that. And I understand you have to have that for OSHA purposes and things like that and safety and things like that. But if there's anything we can do, if now's the time to put some conditional use of that to limit the hours, that can happen.
Is it, I don't, I don't even know if they're running three shifts currently.
I, I don't have the answer to that.
And I, I did take a tour of the place. I, I didn't think there was a third shift, but I could be mistaken.
One, one thing of note though is that this conditional use permit is solely for Kamatsu and has a, a length of duration of five years. So in the, for instance, if Kamatsu were to terminate their lease, the, that conditional use permit for the outdoor storage would also cease. So it's not like someone else could come in there and just pick up on that and, and store other things out there. So that's, it, it's very specific to that company and what they're doing.
And again, as Ken said, you'd have to do some investigation, but seeing as how they have nothing stored outside now.
There is storage.
But, but not, not that to go online.
Not on, it's not on the property. This is an expansion of their outdoor storage.
Right, exactly. But we have to investigate where that noise is coming from.
I appreciate it. Yeah, so. Good, thanks.
Due in order, thank you. Second call, anybody wishing to speak? Anybody in the queue, Kevin? Third and final call. Kevin is indicating no. We will now close the public hearing and go on to item six, which is consideration of an ordinance approving that conditional use permit. Open it up. Steve, you want to go first?
Doug, why, why is a conditional use permit only five years?
Well, in this instance, the, it's five years because quite honestly, staff initially did not support us. We are not typically predisposed to allowing this amount in type of outdoor storage. And we felt, and the commission actually felt, and that under the very prescribed circumstances that this company would be allowed to have this outdoor storage. Now, state law gave the city the ability to restrict, restrict the duration of conditional use permits as, you know, a few years ago via statute. And typically, our conditional use permits run for a period of 10 years, for the most part. This was recognized that this is probably something a little bit different. And that given the typical length of the lease or what have you, that this would be an adequate trial to see if this works out. And if it does not, you have the ability to not renew that conditional use permit after five years rather than waiting for a decade to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No question, just want to add a commentary, just to, you know, going over all, I mean, this has been in the, in the works for, for months now. And appreciate all the work the staff has done with the owners. Planning commission did a commendable job in going through the, the process here in terms of making sure they got a product that was going to be acceptable to the surrounding neighborhood and the community. It does have the upside that it does keep a valued employer in the community. It was a very large building that would not be well-served, empty to the city. So I just wanted to state that I appreciate the work that all the members of planning commission, mayor, staff did, along with the owners being cooperative, investing quite a bit of money in, in upgrading the facility along with their infrastructure plan. So sensitive to the neighborhood that Mike and I share on the, on the north side, that we had significant concerns on screening the operation and light, light pollution and noise pollution. So they were very receptive to those, those interactions and we appreciate everyone, everyone's effort in that regard. I did have an expand, significantly expand the notification range here. And I heard from one neighbor out of that, Mike had his notice, so he obviously chose to appear in person. But other than that, he did not receive any other feedback.
Thank you, Ken. Anybody else?
Mayor Dan, Alderman Duke Neack, your district. I just have some comments as well. And typically with planning commission decisions, I don't have too much to say. But after seeing the committee report, I just want to thank, as Ken had mentioned, the planning commission and the staff for the work they did on this. What, what brought this to my attention or what, what gave me, I guess, the, the moment of concern there was a picture that was included in the report of a similar type storage area that was in a different community. And needless to say, it's not a good look. So I'm glad that obviously our planning commission saw the potential hazards with having that type of storage facility not go without some type of oversight or regulation. So you guys did a good job on that one. And it's, you know, again, going to at least preserve some of the, the look of that neighborhood. Because I, again, if you take a look in the report and a storage facility of a similar type in a different community, not a pretty look. So good job, guys, on staff and planning to make sure there's going to be again, some oversight of that area.
Chris, anything?
I was just going to say, we, we did kick this around a few times at planning commission. So at, and I'm glad that Mike brought up the, the noise concerns that he has now, whether it's Kamatsu or whether it's someone else, because that, we didn't hear that from anybody that had presented at all the meetings. So it's good to hear. It's not good to hear, but it's, it's now, now we know, so we can try and help do something about it. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Well, planning actually just came back a couple of times and they worked diligently with staff to address the issues. I myself walked it, I think a couple of the aldermen might have went out as well, walked the site. As Ken said, it, it's, it's good business and Doug reiterated, you know, we didn't want to make this any sort of precedent. It was kind of a one-offer. And that was the reason on the sunset too, on, on the whole conditional use. So, you know, we'll see how it all works, but just to add to that, Kamatsu is also going to bring a number of jobs down. So their employment's going to increase quite a bit there too. So if there's no further questions, I'll consider a motion on number six, please.
Yeah, we'll move to prove, approve ordinance 3002, approving a conditional use permit for the outdoor storage materials at 10001 South Howell Avenue.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Duke Neack.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And our next public hearing is consideration of a request by Linda Groans Levy, General Capital Group for an amendment to an existing planned unit development for the property in 9962 South 13th. Catherine, if you would, please.
Certainly, public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Linda Groans Levy, General Capital Group for an amendment to the existing planned unit development to add the property at 9962 South 13th Street. Applicant is Linda Groans Levy, General Capital Group, property owner, Ryan Business Park LLC. Therefore, as legal description, date of notice is February 24th, 2020.
Thank you, Catherine. Bless you.
Bless you.
Doug?
Thank you again. Public hearing number two this evening is an amendment to the planning unit development or PUD for the Ryan Business Park. The address of the property that's being added to the business park is at 9962 South 13th Street. Obviously, Ryan Business Park, Amazon Development, along with some ancillary future development in that area. That whole PUD was approved in 2018, August of that year. And at that point in time, this parcel, which you can see if you can, I don't know if I can direct your attention to the graphic on the screen, way in the south of this corner, there's a little red box there. That property was not included as part of the PUD. The, the person did not agree to sell at that point in time, which is fine. Circumstances have changed and since then, the owners of the park have acquired that property. So in order to make the zoning contiguous and correct, they have actually done a certified survey map that incorporates that, that lot into the park itself. And now we need to adjust the zoning boundary to bring that into the full as well. That's boiling it down, that's as simple as it gets. It's just combining that, that former residential property into the Ryan Business Park. This is a public hearing. Again, if anyone has any questions or comments regarding this, the forward man with the planning development incorporating the property at 9962 South 13th Street, please approach the microphone or if you're attending digitally this evening, please raise your hand, indicate your presence. And once called upon, please proceed to address your question and or comment to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Great, and we will make three calls. This will be the first.
Hi, Peter Demanos, 1210 West Dover Drive. I live just south of that, that parcel that, what's, what do you guys plan to have come in there?
What's going in there is a office, where, office warehouse building.
It'll be some of a business, very similar business park buildings that you see probably going up in the Oak Creek Business Park.
Or the, the building.
The Creek Cyclopedist.
Building similar nature. On Sixth and Rosson.
Okay.
Ma'am, you have to be on the record. You can't speak from the audience, you'll have to come up for me.
That's my wife.
Oh, well, you can ask a question for her.
If she, if she lets you.
Where does that, where does that property line end? Right now, we live, we're in that, the grid is out. All the burns are up?
Yeah, all, all the burns are up there. And we, we're trying to find out who owned that property because we, there's a number of dead trees on their lot on their side. And she called you last year and you never got back to us.
Drag, to drag the trees out when they, when they demoed them out?
Yeah.
That lot, yeah. I think that lot, is that lot cleared? It's clear.
It's clear, but they, they didn't, they didn't clear those trees out. And then there, there was a tree service there this, this past weekend. And I talked to the tree service guy and he's like, you need to talk to the property owner. But they were clearing the trees on, on other lots to the east.
It's a little bit of a long story with that lot because it was kind of, I wouldn't call it heavily wooded, but it was, it had a large amount of woods. And the property owner went in and kind of jumped the gun and cleared it before he should have. And anyways, we, we kind of got in a little bit of disagreement of when he should have did it. It was going to happen either way.
Right.
But I was under the, oh, we got, we got the owner. I was under the assumption that it was cleaned up or going to be gone.
Well, there's, there's a whole row and there's, there's a few dead, dead trees. And they're widow makers basically, and we have little, little boys that play in the backyard and.
Okay, well, are these trees cut down and laid in a pile?
No, no, they're, they're standing. And then they're dead.
Okay, well, then that could fall on possibly me for kind of scolding him for clearing it without, and then he stopped altogether. So anyways, we'll let the property owner speak.
Mike, you should be able to speak. We need your name and address for the record.
Uh, Mayor, council members, uh, this is Mike Faber with Ryan Business Park LLC. N seventeen W two four two 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 Riverwood Drive, uh, Waukesha, Wisconsin. I'm happy to report that although with the late winter activities of being deep snow, um, it was, uh, at least six months that we have been struggling to find tree services that will actually come and service that property line. Uh, on the parceling question, uh, we did not realize that there were any dead trees and we were hesitant to take down trees even if they were, uh, weed trees, because we thought that the adjoining subdivision would appreciate more, uh, mature, uh, tree line to help screen their properties from ours. But what we're talking about is only on that, uh, small corner parcel that we have acquired in the fourth quarter. I am happy to go out and inspect and have the same tree service that was out there last week, um, which we did at the request of, uh, one of the neighbors on Dover Drive. Um, have them come out and take down anything that's on our property that's dead. Glad to know about it.
Yeah, I spoke to the tree service. It was a cut above, they were called. And, uh, they said they got the contract back in February. So if you can have them come back out, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
My apologies if I missed the call.
Yeah.
It doesn't, doesn't ring a bell with me. And actually, my apologies to this particular developer. I'm thinking of a different situation with some trees. I was thinking of the one off the way. So I apologized, Mr. Faber. It wasn't a disagreement with Mr. Faber.
I was a little puzzled there, Mayor. I would.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Mike. I get confused sometimes.
I didn't know what building you were talking about that was going in, so that gives.
You know what? I, I guess, I guess I've talked so much about that particular mess with the trees that I went right to it. So. You know, yeah, come on up, ma'am. Thank you. Wait, wait, hang on. We need your name and address.
Oh, I mean.
We do have formalities.
Alani Devano, his wife, uh, same thing, twelve ten Dover Drive. Uh, so this house is going to be demoed, I'm assuming? Right? So I would like to, when is construction starting?
There is no plan here yet.
Okay. So there's a plan for office buildings and warehouses, same
The developers are.
Kind of.
Tell you what he's got.
Yeah.
Same kind of ugly, right? Going other places. So what is the, they put the berms up. I'm not really sure what, what was the point of putting the berms up so early? They did it for a reason. So what was the intent there? For this development?
Well, Mike, Mike, Mike Faber will delve into it, but essentially why did they get the berms up there? Well, A, while they were moving a lot of the dirt for Amazon and B, to give vegetation enough time to establish so that, you know, so that when development did take place on that parcel just to north of you, that there'd be, you get a few, at least maybe one or two growing seasons in there. It just makes landscaping more effective.
Do we have a setback at all? Like knowing how far back?
Yeah, there are setbacks that are in play, uh, in terms of what can and can't be built, where we, and those will all be come through the planning commission. And if you're within three hundred feet, which that's, obviously you are, you will receive a notice of that meeting.
But when you see the notice, if it's within three hundred feet, which is not that much. So I'm, I'm just wondering how, based on my previous experience with FedEx, how does it work when you decide, okay, we sold it to you, you're allowed to build. When do we get a say? When we, at what point, where was that meeting that said, we don't think it's a good idea to have more, I'm sorry, crap around, you know, our subdivision, because it's everywhere. And it's very unappealing. And just like the gentleman, there's noise all the time, you know, not where we are, but there will be. If he's going to get it, I know we are. So I was curious, like where the, you know, where's the traffic going to come from? And how far is the drive going to be to get to that park? Is it going to be near the Amazon entrance? Are they going to share an entrance? Like what's, what's the plan?
Actually, that, that property's been zoned for manufacturing for, for quite some time. Uh, then this, again, this, the details that you're looking for in terms of what the site plan are going to be, don't exist right now, just because that will come when developer finds a user for the building or wants to develop something on a speculative basis. And at that point in time, the planning commission, different body than this, but two of the aldermen are on that same commission. Will review the site plan, the architectural plan, the landscaping plan, the lighting plan, the drainage plan, part of that will be the traffic plan. Uh, so there's a number of things that, you know, there's no finality on it this evening. That will all come into play once those actual plans come into the city, which they have not yet.
And, and who owns Ryan Business Park? Is Capital Group just a developer?
General Capital Group is in partnership with, uh, um, Mike Faber and, and his company, uh, and they develop business parks.
Okay. So that land is just there and being zoned if they choose to.
They own the property, it's correctly zoned. Uh, they have the ability to develop the property in accordance with the zone.
Okay. So it's been approved that right already. We know it's going to be manufacturing and office. We just don't know when.
Correct. Or what?
Or what? Well, whatever, manufacturing, office, same thing, warehouse. Okay, that's it.
Will we have a say in what comes in there?
Uh, I mean, sorry.
Will, will we have a say in what comes in there?
We can provide feedback, but I mean, the owner owns the property.
Yeah, I know, but, but it just, like she says, it just.
And in terms of it's.
The city does not own the property.
Right, I understand that.
Sell widgets versus something else? No. I mean, to the extent that what they are proposing to use the property for is consistent with the permitted uses in that zoning district. And there's, and there's a lot you can do in manufacturing. Uh, they have the right to do that. Now, for instance, if they, they want to come in and do something that's not permitted, they end up to come back and amend this, the zoning, at which time there's a public hearing in front of the common council. But, uh, certainly, uh, most of the things that are going to happen in the business park that are allowed in Ophir Business Park, uh, will be allowed in the Ryan Business Park.
Right. Okay. I just think that was a mistake what you guys did there, but all right.
No, no, I'm just curious because when they, when you zone it, I'm just trying to understand, you know, as a resident, like when you zone it, why, I mean, it was a farm, right?
At one, at one point.
Was that farm releasing the land? Did they own it?
Farmer, well, I, somebody owned the land. I don't know.
Somebody.
Our farm was there since the eighteen hundreds.
So they sold it to?
Dennis Disher sold his land to Mike Faber.
Okay. So they sold it to the business.
But the land use plan has been in place, Alani, for decades. In terms of, this would be industrial, commercial.
Prior to the subdivisions around there being built?
Prior to subdivisions.
Okay. But you have the authority to change the zoning, don't you? To say, now that we decided to zone it, you know, residential, maybe it's not such a good idea to put, you know, manufacturing, office, warehousing. We, we have the ability to do that.
But again, according to city planning, they look at certain things and it sits on a state highway and a county highway. And normally subdivisions don't sit along roads with that much traffic as well. So it isn't always desirable to put a subdivision on the corner of thirteenth and Ryan. So it, overall, the master plan, the city has a master plan of how it tries to develop and balance itself out. And this, this was a, a prime location for a manufacturing site way back when.
I just wish that, because I know things can be changed. Clearly, there's always amendments or, or things asking to, you know, rezone. That you think about this and think about us, like and our quality of life before you do stuff. I mean, you didn't do it with FedEx. I really don't want to hear about jobs because nobody buys them. So just think about these things when you're, we're surrounding these children and families with these monstrosities and just all the, you know, the, the effects, I guess, not just environmental, but just health effects that it has. It's so uncomfortable and and ugly. And I think about that, like, I feel like, and I'm not the only one, because we talk about this in other groups. We just, we really would like you to put like home life first and everything else secondary. Just, this, you know, people come here to live, not just work.
I understand that. And I think we try to balance it as best we can between the two, because there's never, we're never going to make everybody happy all the time, ma'am. So we have to do a balance for the, the majority of the thirty five thousand people that live in this city.
Well, you could stop zoning things, manufacturing and storage. You can say, how about putting the residential area there instead?
Why, I think there's, if I may, there's a, there's a process where when you do a comprehensive plan, it looks at a number of factors. Location along major highways, along railroad tracks, uh, adjacent to freeway interchanges, uh, that you look at when you're looking at what your future business zoning is for your, your city. And even in the old comprehensive plan, that showed that as being commercial and industrial. So, uh, as the city, we did a comprehensive plan two years ago. Uh, I mean, it was really, uh, taking into account all the factors that affect that property, that affect the city, that affect the transportation network. It was decided by, to this council, to the planning commission, to public hearings, to public input, that that was going to be manufacturing. And, you know, it certainly does have impacts and no one's denying that has impacts. But I think that you're actually in, in the fortunate position that we have a developer here who's very sensitive to those impacts and has gone above and beyond in managing those impacts. Point, case in point being the berm that was put up there. I mean, there was always some requirement for screening, but I, I can tell you this, the city's code doesn't require a, uh, Mike, how big is that berm? Fourteen feet? You know, it, it's something that he, Mike has shown great awareness and and dealing with the impacts on the neighbor to mitigate that to the extent possible. Is it going to be perfect? I mean, perfect, the definition of perfect is different for many people. I mean,
True.
I mean, the farmer who owned that property who, who, you know, decided that it's time to sell and, and, you know, wanted to make use of his property in accordance with the city's longstanding plan. It was perfectly fine for him to do that. And, you know, no one's going to begrudge him of that. Uh, just a matter of, again, taking into account what's best for this entire community. And unfortunately, this, the council cannot just say, well, if one person or five people, you know, want to go against the property rate that's been in place for this property owner for, for decades and a plan that's been in place for decades, and it's not as simple as just saying, no, we really don't want that there.
Well, I mean, we don't get a say. So but why do they?
I, I guess I'm not going to debate whether you had a say.
No, we don't. Every choice we've ever said no to, it just went out, they, they're a priority and we're not, it's just, we are letters. Let me go back.
I guess, and maybe.
It's not perfect.
Maybe just let me finish my thought. I mean, there, there's a process that was involved in, in the, the rezoning of this property at public hearing. There's a process involved in the comprehensive plan. I understand you don't feel that was probably maybe a fair process from your perspective, but there was a process nonetheless.
Well, you're right. And I, you think, I know you've, I think I feel far fortunate. We don't feel fortunate. Not just my husband and I, but as a community there, we, we don't for many reasons. So I think we can all make better choices for the living, people who are here twenty four hours a day, not who are in and out of these buildings.
Right. Thank you for your opinions. Um, was I in the second call?
That was the first call.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Uh, second call. Kevin, is there anybody in the queue? And third and final call. We will now close the public hearing and go on to eight, which is consideration of the ordinance amending those conditions and restrictions for the planned unit development on the property in ninety nine sixty two South thirteenth. Council? Questions, comments? I know we talked quite a bit about it, but.
Just commentary, Daniel. Uh, thank you. And, uh, Mike, I just want to iterate to the developer, appreciate him actually putting the financial resources in play here to take this property and put it in the productive use. It's been a little bit neglected, I think, for in anticipation of a developer doing what Mike has chosen to do in terms of buying him out and, uh, incorporating into what should be eventually a higher value use of the property. So, uh, as Doug had reiterated, developer sensitive to the neighborhood, English shares, uh, it's, it's the money he spent is, and the time he's invested here is, I think, speaks volumes to that. Uh, so we appreciate his interest and his, his investment. He's put his money where his mouth is and uh, we do appreciate his efforts.
Great. Thank you, Ken. Steve?
Alderman Kirkowski, first district. I was listening to the comments. I just made, just more of a commentary again, is that Mike is, is just one of many developers that come into this city and they want to do things. And I really can't, in the, in all the years I've been on the council, have ever dealt with a developer who was basically told the city, um, I own the property, it's within code, I'm going to build what I want to build and, 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 and just follow the rules and go from there. I mean, if there have been issues, whether it's residential or commercial, seems like all the developers want to work with the city and work with the residents and try and come to a happy, uh, you know, happy understanding. So, uh, appreciate Mike doing what he's doing down there and and for all the other developers that come into the city and they, they want to have business here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? If no further, uh, comments, um, motion, please.
It will move the council adopts ordinance three zero zero three and ordinance to approve an amendment to the add the property in ninety nine sixty two South thirteenth Street existing planned unit development.
Guzikowski, second.
Hold call.
Alderman Gale.
Hi.
Guzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukneak.
Hi. And item nine is informational and it is our COVID nineteen update. And is Darcy with us? I don't see her. Not sure. We may have forego our, our update.
All right.
I see.
Come back if she joins.
Yeah, we can come back. I might have threw a curve ball with, uh, the election tomorrow. So, okay, we will move on, uh, to our treasurer's report, informational. Uh, I know Barb's on. Welcome, Barb.
Good evening. Thank you. So, uh, treasurer's report on investment banking for the month ending February twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Our beginning balance was seventy two million, eight hundred sixty five thousand, seven hundred ninety five dollars. Our ending balance is fifty six million, ninety one thousand, nine hundred ninety eight dollars. Interest earned for the month was twenty one thousand, nine hundred forty seven dollars. Uh, we had a decrease from beginning to end balance of sixteen million, seven hundred seventy three thousand, seven hundred ninety seven dollars. Our larger activity for February, we had tax collection of three million, nine hundred eighty eight thousand, seventy seven dollars. And we paid out our, uh, January tax settlements in February of seventeen million, nine hundred seventy six thousand, eight hundred twenty three dollars.
And thank you, Barb. Uh, questions from council? Nothing? Seeing none. Well, thank you very much, Barb. Appreciate the report.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Uh, that will get us to eleven and that is informational as well. And that is a thought prime around the comprehensive property code compliance program. And Doug Seymour is going to take it from here.
Well, I think what I'd like to do is to just let Andrew kind of speak to the first slide about the genesis of this and our, from a strategic plan and now I'd be happy to kind of take a look after that. I know that you're well versed in that.
I was going to, uh, keep my powder dry for later, but, um, of course, uh, you know, this is no secret what we're doing here, uh, tonight or what we're discussing. It's really a culmination of a couple of years' worth of, of discussion, particularly around budget time, uh, where we talked a little bit about this concept in very general terms. In the last couple of budgets, we incrementally, uh, added resources to our operating budget. So we had this full time, uh, really a full time, uh, salary benefited position to tackle, uh, comprehensive code, uh, property maintenance and, and code compliance in the community. So, um, I think that, uh, again, you, you know, it's in, it's in the strategic plan for twenty twenty through twenty twenty two. Uh, that's important in its own right, because that was one of those, uh, that, that was really an addendum to our original twenty seventeen plan. And there were just a small host of, uh, four or five items that we knew. Had we gone through this full blown particip, public participation process, this stakeholder participation, patient process, uh, that, that would have survived your, uh, you know, your priority list. It's, it's among our highest priorities here to really begin, uh, a new platform, uh, begin anew with prioritizing, emphasizing and, and, and the first step of that was directing, the first step of it was telling your staff it was a priority for you as elected officials and to, uh, allocating resources. And Doug and, and myself will help you go through a discussion of, of the how. And then, uh, we'd really like to hear from you, hear your feedback. And then, you know, I, I have some pointed questions or, or conversation points that we can bring up later on.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Andrew. And, and you talked about, I mean, this didn't originate in a vacuum and, and kind of the, the the potential solutions didn't kind of originate from, this doesn't just picked off the shelf from somebody in the other community or anything like that. But we actually had a interdisciplinary team consisting of myself, uh, police chief, fire chief, uh, city attorney, certainly Andrew, uh, Williamus and Josh, uh, management intern. Uh, they were a smaller group which kind of really dove into it. And we had actually, it was a, uh, kind of filtered from the larger group, which involved everyone who's had anything to do with code enforcement in the city. And, and as you'll see in a few. as you'll see in a few slides, that, that is a process that become, became unwieldy at times. So that is why we really focused on the smaller group. So, so obviously the question is going to be why? Why code awareness enforcement? And you all have the answer to that in your mind, but certainly from, from a common sense perspective, I mean, the home is likely the single most largest lifetime investment for, for many people. And immediate neighborhood factors can and do influence home values. You know, I think anecdotally, everyone believes that, you know, having a bad neighbor, someone who doesn't maintain their property, you know, can really impact your property values. And it's hard to kind of think that way. You know, given kind of the escalating values that we're seeing in this environment, but there's, there's documentation and there's some evidence to suggest that a bad neighborhood in quotation marks can affect your property value by as much as 20%, or by 10%, excuse me. And beyond that, unresolved neighborhood conflicts really tend to escalate if left unattended to. Not only consuming considerable city time and resources, but it just creates very awkward situations for neighborhoods that I think can be avoided for the most part. You know, if we are a little bit more proactive in our code enforcement. So let's talk about for the moment, the current city process. And you all know it because you're part of it. And how does a, how does complaint come in? So a lot of times someone will call you multiple times, you know, so this is happening here, take care of it. So at that point in time, they'll probably then call me or they'll call Lori or they'll call Jeff, our building inspector and, and issue the same complaint. So we've got the same person talking to the elected officials, talking to any number of different department managers and not getting a direct answer from anyone because there's no one prescribed process for how you handle complaint. EPW handles grass complaints, the zoning administrator, zoning complaints. Our building inspector handles 15300, which are property maintenance complaints. Health department handles complaints related in the sanitation. So you can see in this process, there's a lot of confusion. And I can only imagine the people on the other end are confused as well as to, well, you know, it's been three weeks and the problem's still there. So what's going on? So I mean, our old process, which was essentially just a result of of the resources that we had and the situation that we found ourselves in as a growing city really didn't prescribe a really clean-cut process for how these issues are taken care of. And as a result of that, it's been frustrating for a lot of people. I know it's been a little frustrating for you. It's been frustrating for our citizens. So that really was one of the main reasons why we felt we could do a much better job in that respect.
If I could just jump in at, at will, if you don't mind, just have a dialogue a little bit here with you. Personally, coming into the, in the community, kind of going through these seasons of complaints and really looking at what's going on in this community over the last five years. The reason that we didn't have dedicated and directed enforcement of these very, you know, visible nuisance, nuisances that exist is we didn't have, we didn't have, we didn't have the resources to do it. If you look at what our community development department is and the community that's growing like the city of Oak Creek, Doug, Kerry, Lori, intern. While we foisted a lot of these, a lot of these issues, number one, on our zoning administrator. Well, our zoning administrator is also one of our planners. So there, there just wasn't a lot of loose change to pick up in terms of time that you can save on planning and zoning in this community to go out and get after these items that are very important to the elected officials and to, to many of your constituents. So the second area, what we call the 15300 codes, which is kind of the premise, keeping, you know, the pride in your, in your outdoor premise, outdoor exterior property maintenance. Well, guess who's in charge of that? Our building inspection team. Guess who also has a little bit to do in a community that's growing like the city of Oak Creek is? Our building inspection staff is almost, well, I wouldn't say exclusively, but incredibly burdened from a time perspective and a resource perspective, just given the new construction. And we see the big new construction buildings, but what, you know, you might, we might not see is the 15 or 20 homes they go into with somebody doing a remodel or those types of things. So we really, you know, we really didn't have a point guard that, where that could, you know, be that chameleon to be like, you know, I can't drop these priorities that we have for this other priority. So I have to make a value judgment of what the priority is. And it's probably the contractor calling on the job site that says, hey, can you get your butt over here now because we're trying to close up these walls? So that's kind of where we found ourselves over, you know, the last several years, specifically with the development boom in the community. But you can see the terrible web that we wove with not knowing who's on first and what's on second. And we'll get into how we're going to prescribe hopefully a remedy for that. But I just want to make it clear that there are still certain things, certain items that statutorily still has to be the community public health officer. You know, he or she shall write these types of orders that dovetail to the statutes. The building inspection, you know, kind of building codes and construction sites, that's, that's all going to remain with our building inspection team. We'll get to a little bit later on of what we see as the scope of, 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 of issues or code sections that this person would be kind of solely or not, not necessarily solely in charge of, but definitely in charge of point guarding for us and dishing the ball where needed.
And I think that's a really great analogy because I mean, this person, you know, we're not hiring someone who knows everything about building codes, about health codes, about, you know, about zoning codes, et cetera, et cetera. We're hiring someone who's able to work with the right people. And we're hiring someone who's able to serve as your point of contact, the citizen's point of contact. So they don't have to know, well, if this is X, I need to talk to the building inspector. I mean, you talk to the neighborhood preservation officer. And what happens from that point on, sure, they're going to work with the appropriate parties. But we're trying to really simplify and make that a very transparent process. And we'll get into that a little bit later. So as we were developing what the program means for Oak Creek, because you know, we're you know, although there was certainly a lot of similarities between communities, not only in Milwaukee area, but across the country. We certainly have our own things that were important to us from the perspective of code enforcement and neighborhood preservation. So some of the, the factors which we thought were very important. As we developed this program, we're looking for a code awareness and enforcement program that A balances compassion, a strict interpretation. And we realized that there are circumstances out there, you know. And finding someone who can, can really look at a situation from multiple perspectives is going to be key. But at the same time, you know, we need to really take a look at our codes and, and those that need to be interpreted in a strict, strict manner, I mean, really need to, for, be, be, to be dealt, done in that manner for a reason. We need to be consistent. I mean, it's, it's no longer appropriate to say, well, well, this person is, you know, violating the code here. But you know, I know that there's other people out there doing the same things, but no one's complaining about that. So we're going to let that slide. We just need to be consistent in its application. Again, proactive, revenue reactive. Right now, quite honestly, what we enforce is by, it's complaint driven. And you know, it, it works to a certain extent until it doesn't. And it doesn't work. So from that perspective, you know, and I think we'll talk about this later. I mean, you, you'll see a lot of, as we become be more, become more proactive as a community, we'll be touching the lives of a lot more people. And that's bad from the perspective of, I mean, if you've got an issue that needs to be rectified, you know, you'll probably be hearing from this person at some point. But it's also good for the 10 or so neighbors who's been living with, or been living with this issue for, so for sometimes years. And now we're going to get that taken care of. So you know, we just need to be consistent. Always a goal and will always be a goal of this position, this program, to strive for education and voluntary compliance. We're not going to go out there waiting with a stick and saying, oh, oh, I see you've got a car parked there. Here's your citation. You know, it's always going to be, hey, did you know that the city's codes only let you park the car, park vehicles on certain surfaces, at certain locations? And you know, we'd like to work with you on a, on a plan to address that. But at the same time, in those instances where the property owner is unable or unwilling to work with the city on those issues, we've got to be strict about it. I mean, we've, we've got to maintain our codes because remember what we're doing here, we're preserving neighborhoods. And we've all seen the, the impact that some of these potential violators violations have on the neighborhood. This program will also, and the person running this program will also partner with neighborhood community groups. We will, we really want to show this program as being a resource for people. I mean, again, circumstances, right? And you've got a violation of our property maintenance code. Well, you know, I'm, I'm just coming off surgery or I'm elderly and I really can't do that. And and so maybe we can direct you to some resources within the city, within the county for home improvement loans or with some volunteer groups that are able to work with that property owner to kind of affect those remedies and working cooperatively with that. We need a process that is A predictable and transparent. You want to know, the people want to know where, where in this whole flow chart that complaint is and when they can expect some resolution on that. Something that we don't have right now, but as we've discussed that, you'll see that we do have some opportunities to, to make that a lot better. And finally, this whole program is collaborative and not merely transactional. Again, our goal is not to write tickets. This is never going to be a revenue generator for the city, or at least I hope not. The goal is compliance. So to break it all down, very, you know, it's a very simply a four-step process and it's obviously much larger than that, but you identify the issue. Staff does, and this neighborhood preservation officer does research, documents that issue, and they make an assessment. So is there a violation or isn't there? We notify the property owner, we coordinate the handling of that issue, you know, trying to work with you, you know, did you know your property isn't a violation? Okay, let's work with, on your, with, we're on a program to correct that. And moving along that spectrum of compliance, hey, you know, we, on such and such a day, we said this, I noticed that you haven't changed that. So you know, here's a notice of violation and now you have to correct this. And then finally, along the spectrum of, and you'll, you'll see there's a nuance in that. But going to the issuance of a citation, which is, you know, the resolution portion of this, I mean, it's everyone's goal. We want you to correct the violation. We want the situation to be resolved. And you know, we're not, again, we're not out there with a ticket book, you know, making this a revenue source for the city. So with that, and this whole program, given that education and really working with the community and establishing what the goals of the program are, is so important. We felt that it was appropriate that we really had a branded kind of educational resource to let people know why we're doing this. And the program that came up was called Creek Code. And it's really geared towards what it says there. It's neighborhood preservation and nuisance abatement. Not obviously a number of other factors that go into that, but when you, you know, bottom line, those are the types of things that we're trying to accomplish there. So it's really, again, it's a comprehensive community aesthetic preservation and nuisance abatement program. Again, and I won't draw on these promoting public awareness of the community benefits of code enforcement. A blended proactive and reactive methods, something that simplifies the process and clearly identifies roles and responsibilities. And this, this fourth, this fourth one's really important from my perspective. It allows for flexibility, flexibility, but ultimately demands accountability. Both from the property owner and from staff and from the process. You know, when we say we're going to do something, we're going to do something. And you as the elected officials should hold us accountable for, for doing, for doing that. And that neighborhood preservation officer or NPO, as we refer to it, will be central to the success of that program. So this person, there are going to be a lot of demands placed on this, this, this person. And you know, we're, we're in the process and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But this will be one point of contact for citizens, elected officials and staff, the point guard that Andrew was talking about. You know, this person's not going to do it all, but they're going to have relationships with the people that can make that happen. And they're going to be responsible for making that happen. And we need to support them both from an elected perspective and from a staff perspective and from a community perspective. This person's going to have a, need to have a strong customer service focus and a very positive attitude. Going to need to, need to deal with people in an effective and compassionate manner. Again, you know, sometimes there's a little part of social worker involved. Sometimes it's you know, just listening to someone and trying to come up with solutions and working with them. But ultimately, at the end of the day, you need to someone who's, who's firm enough in their, knowing their roles and responsibilities that you know, we need to get this resolved. So this person will also be responsible for public education and outreach, working again with all the resources that city has with respect to branding and communication to really effectively communicate why we're doing this. Assisting impacted property owners throughout that process. And again, directing them to resources that might be available in the community to help and resolve those issues. So there's a couple of different platforms. It's first being intentionally to rolling out a branding and public education program, given that public education and communication will be critical as the city transitions from a reactive to a proactive mode. So we really need to communicate those goals that balance property owner rights with neighbors' rights to enjoy their property and preserve and enhance property values throughout the neighborhood. Part of that transparency is when you as an elected official, when, when I as a property owner make a complaint, we want to see where that, how that's being resolved. And we're in the process of that. Right now, there's nothing that allows us to do that because it's such a tangled web, to be quite honest. What we are working towards, whether it be through this software or some additional software resources that we'll have, is a community dashboard. So I can say, oh, I, you know, I wonder how that, that issue is being resolved or we're in the process of that. So so you can look at, at a map on our GIS system or on our webpage, say, oh, I see over, over here, you know, there was a complaint filed against junk cars at this address. I wonder where in the process they are. And you can click on that and you can say, well, they've got a notice of violation. The next step will go to an appeal or go towards municipal court. So that's a really important and critical element, that transparency element for, for all parties. Platform three is rule of definition and clarifying and streamlining municipal code. You know, we're going through a zoning code update right now. And that's going to help, but it's not the panacea because there's tidbits and sections of code enforcement everywhere in the code. And the city attorney working with staff has kind of identified and pulled all those together. And we can consolidate those where possible, might not be possible to consolidate all of them. But the goal is to kind of get as much as possible into this new community preservation and aesthetic code. Some might call it the property maintenance code. And Andrew mentioned that we've got a zoning administrator. So the way this is intended to work and we're going to kind of through a four process is that there's really two different tracks. Think of it as a residential track, which is handled by the NPO, the neighborhood preservation officer. Doing with the majority of things that happen on a residential basis. Junk cars, property maintenance, to a certain extent, weed, you know, weeds. And just, you know, if it's happening in your neighborhood as a resident, it's typically going to be the NPO that, that works on that and solves point. If it's commercial, multifamily, non-residential, that's the type of thing that we're really equipped to do pretty well through the zoning code. And you can kind of see how we've been accomplishing that through conditional use permits and what have you. That will be primarily handled through the zoning administrator. But from your perspective, from the perspective of the person on the other side of the phone, they're dealing with the NPO. And what happened would be on the scenes after that. I mean, although it's going to be very prescribed, it is going to be kind of happening in the background. So platform number four, and this is important, and we talked about this a lot. And we felt that it was important that the, the public saw this as, oh, this is just some bureaucrat, pencil pushing bureaucrat telling me I can't do what I want to do with my property and, you know, you know, big government, blah, blah, blah. What we thought is, you know, knowing what the goals of the program are in terms of maintaining neighborhoods, preserving neighborhoods and property values. We felt it was very important that we had some checks and balances built in the system. So if you, as a property owner and working with the NPO and you ultimately get a, a notice of violation, an NOV that says you're in violation of this code, you know, we could just say, well, that's, that's you in court. But that's not the program we want to have. We want to have, again, be more collaborative in that process. And as such, what we're proposing is that we create a, a forum of neighbors, peers, if you will, to hold or to hear essentially appeals, notice of violation complaints. That doesn't mean, well, I know Joe and, you know, it's not that bad, so I'm going to let him do that. But it's really to provide a check to the, the power of the zoning administrator or neighborhood preservation officers to say, is this a violation or isn't it? If it's not, then case closed. But if it is, we expect you to come to, to fix it. And that's the last word. So, so you don't go running to your alderman. So, so you don't go running to your alderman, you don't go running to the mayor because you don't like the decision of the zoning administrator or NPO. You go to the citizens board and after that, you go to court. And so we felt that was a very important piece of that. People always felt that they had kind of a jury of their peers to, to really serve as a check for what somebody sees the, the powers of the NPO or the zoning administrator.
I think that's an important checkpoint because we haven't necessarily always been. I don't know that we've been aligned in our goals when things go to municipal court level. They're, that's kind of a process unto itself. It's not necessarily influenced by the city at that point in time. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's an adjudication of things of sorts. So the judge at the time, at any time and point in time in the future can take a position one way or the other that may not necessarily realize the outcomes that we're trying to seek. So just understanding a little bit about the human psychology, you know, these, these certain customers that we have here are, you know, 90% not going to be very happy that they've been contacted. This position is rife with inherent conflict. This is a very special person we're trying to find here. But I have to say that they do this around the country more routinely than we do here in Wisconsin. So it's not, it's not a completely unknown quantity. It's not a completely obtuse idea we're talking about here. It just seems that in the state of Wisconsin, they've tried to do things that we have in the past. And that's, well, if, you know, maybe we hire a full time instead of a part time administrator, a zoning administrator, then we can handle that. Or the building inspection team can handle that. I don't know in, if more than five or 10 years ago that worked or didn't work. Suspect that it didn't, given that it was a topic of conversation in 2016 during our strategic planning process. But we are borrowing from successful programs, of course. This isn't anything brand spanking new. So i- in the end, just with the inherent conflict that we will have with certain residents who don't necessarily want to be contacted with, they've stored their boat or their RV here forever in their front yard on their grass, whatever the issue. We thought that as opposed to having, you know, the first line of adjudication, if you will. I wouldn't necessarily use that term, but going to, I disagree with you, give me my ticket, I'll go talk to the judge. Also, we thought the citizen review board would be really critical. And again, as Doug kind of mentioned, but just hitting you on the head with it, it should provide you an outlet to be like, I don't serve, ma'am, I don't know if it's a code violation or not, but there is a process where, among your peers that you can go through. Because I'm just your alderman, I'm not your arbitrator of, you know, things you do lawfully or not on your property. That's not, that's not our role, right? And it's not the staff's role. So we thought that, and we want to hear you from you on this potential citizen aesthetic preservation board, how that might work. But certainly with the carrot, not the stick approach, certainly with leading with compassion, education as the biggest tool to compliance and not, you know, not clubbing people over the head with violations, notices of violations and tickets. That does add to the timeline. That's why Doug had put in his last slide, this citizen aesthetic preservation board doesn't apply to obviously life safety things or weeds, you know, we can't take a, a three week pause just to see if somebody's weeds were seven or eight inches higher, whatever the standard is here. So we'll, we'll sort out those types of things moving forward as this, as this process, as this program gets off the ground and running. Just might as well finish my comments here because I'm on a soapbox a bit. This, this position is very difficult. It takes a special kind of individual who wants to do this work and, and really it's, it's impactful work. It's very tangible, the, the benefits of this position are tangible. This position fails every time without political support. Every time, this program fails every time. We will churn through individuals in this position every couple, two or three years. If what we have valued and prioritized and placed in our strategic plan doesn't prevail. This is not the magic pill. This person coming on board is not the magic pill where everybody is going to be happy with the process moving forward, that what was months and months can now be two weeks because somebody can make a couple of phone calls and write a couple of letters. You know, the properties that are out there, those things aren't going to magically disappear. This is a little bit of a, of a pep talk for you because this person, it's not ideal. This is my fault, I'll take full responsibility for this. Bringing this person on mid-season, mid complaint season, that's not ideal. Probably near the end of June now, we're looking at with the recruiting, help of the recruiting firm. We can't inundate this person the first year. We've had many conversations, Doug and I, Doug knows, and he's, I think you're some weirdly excited about really, no, really, really staying engaged in this, getting this platform off the ground to make this a success. Doug, Doug's really going to have to be hands on and manage this and really, you know, we're not bringing this person in at the end of June and saying, thank goodness you're here, here you go, here's the, here's the list of 35 that we have, we've been waiting for you. You know, Lori is going to have a role to play this year and it'll slowly evolve into some of the vision that we have here. And this is, this, this will change. We will have to try things and learn and adapt and we, we will fail at some things.
Yep. So I mean, if you kind of think back to the original slide that showed kind of Spider's Web of Communication, the process as we see it is a lot more simplified and streamlined in the sense that, you know, whatever the complaint, it comes into the neighborhood preservation officer. And now whether it's again, from the elected officials, from the phone complaint, written complaint or via online, it all comes to that one spot. That person distributes that, you know, planning, zoning, police fire, health, engineering, inspection, public works. And so again, is there a violation or not? If there is, well, I'll contact the property owner and say, hey, did you know? You know, it's just called pre-notification letter or, or something other as we move forward in this. And this gives the opportunity to let people know on a, a less confrontational basis, you know. So the first thing that you see from the city is not this official looking for him. Notice of violation, section 17, we'll go 311, sub A, sub B, sub three. And, and that ultimately puts you on a terrible footing with the property owner. And obviously we don't want that. So we're going to take a little bit of a softer approach in the sense that, you know, we want to work with you to get that corrected. And as long as you work with us within a reasonable timeline, you know, we'll, we'll keep on working with you. But if you don't, we're going to issue one of those kind of nasty grams that notice of violation letter, which kind of prescribes a process for you. And then after that, at that point, if you say, boy, I, I just don't agree with you, that's a violation. Okay, we've got a process for that. There's your, your neighborhood review board or citizens aesthetic preservation board, as we're kind of calling it, as a placeholder. And then they can make the determination, which ultimately, again, if they decide, that's, that was a bit of an overreach, Doug. You know, I think that wasn't a violation, fine. Case closed, then we go back to normal. But if they do uphold and say it's a violation, yep, take care of it. Or else the next steps a citation and then on the court. So there's some exit ramps for people who want to work with the city. Not everybody will. And it's in those cases that we need to be resolute and consistent in kind of seeing that the process gets completed. So a simple timeline, and Andrew kind of alluded to this. Right now, we finalized the job description and actually have we, is it out there right now?
No, we have to do, do finalize the announcement as a group here tomorrow.
So, and I'm not going to read this, you can, you can all read that. So I'd, you know, it just shows you that it's our hope that we can get somebody on by the end of June. And, you know, there's a lot more in the Thought Primer. I invite you to take a closer look at that. There's a job description for the NPO, invite you to take a look at that. Certainly I'm available right now or anytime if you have any questions about how we do things now or how we plan to do things in the future or what my philosophy is with respect to the program and how you'd like to see it move forward, you know where to find me. And I'd be happy to answer those questions as I'd be happy right now to engage in a conversation with you about, will you see the direction of this program go?
Thank you, Doug. I'm sure there's plenty of questions, comments off top of your head, Ken, anything?
Just as, you know, Ben and I as elected leadership have been privy to these discussions. I forgot they actually went back to the strategic planning process back in 16. But, I mean, this has been ongoing inside the building for a couple of years. You know, COVID kind of slowed things down a bit, but still nonetheless, this has been a very thorough process, both thought out. Iterations and iterations and iterations of how this would be, be applied and, and, and put forward and, and rolled out. You know, we're all, every single one of us up here and Greg, you know, properties that have been, because there is no process, like this in place have been neglected, have been in place, have impacted their neighbors for years, decades, some of them. So we know the fact that this has not worked as a community, you know, as alderman, you, you get some of these calls. They're, you know, intractable neighborhood and neighbor conflicts. You know, they're the least solvable things we, we face generally speaking. So they have something in place from a policy standpoint, a very straightforward procedure, you know, sensitive to the community, sensitive to the citizens, somehow that these things can be resolved and finalized and have an endpoint. I think it's, it's a well thought out, it is, it is time, it's budgeted, at least we thought ahead and provided some money. I think it's time we move forward to get it on with it, so.
Chris, anything?
No, Ken kind of stole my thunder.
Okay, Greg?
I'm just curious, I, obviously I only get the few complaints that come into my district and that's not obviously all of them because some of them are coming directly to, to you and staff here. But is there, I guess, how many complaints a year come in that makes us a full time position? Is it, it's a lot?
I will tell you anecdotally, I think, without, I check in with Lori and I think at last point there were 116 open issues on her plate. And again, that's being reactive. So, and I know Andrew had the same, same thought, well, maybe we can try a part time person. And, you know, thinking about our goals for the program. Yeah, I, I think personally that you'd be starting on the wrong foot if you tried to do this again as a part time individual. I think the need is there and, you know, we're not going to create the need. But I think that especially in the first few years, there's going to be enough for this individual to, to work with so that it's, it's a full time job and then some.
I know Greg Alderman-Lorke probably has more, but, you know, I didn't grapple with that. We, we went really back and forth on that and I, you know, we were thinking about, you know, just on a reactive, reactive basis, as Doug alluded to, it, it could be, that, that list could be 40. And it could be some of the most time intensive, the, the prop, the properties, the four or five properties that we're all thinking about. That could take up, that could take up a year or more of somebody's time if they were to go tackle the top 10 in the community. So if you look at the volume and then we added some things that we'll try, like, you know, taking over the weed commissioner duties, you know, as an evolutionary thing. We know that if it, certainly we feel very strongly that out of the gate, it's full time and then some. But if we miss that mark, which I highly doubt in a, in a reactive and a proactive environment, I highly doubt that's the case. There are certain things that we can move around as well, like, you know, weed commissioner duties, snow and ice control, stuff like that. So yeah, that's, I struggle with that a bit myself and then, you know, sorry, I didn't finish my point. If you look at, and these are just things that, you know, we've brainstormed about. But if you look at things that we may, this person or this position slash program may evolve to. You know, we, we, we would love to have a, a home improvement loan or, or a home improvement matching grant of some sort in our community eventually. I think these are things you're going to talk about probably during the next strategic planning session because if you don't bring it up, I will. So we'll talk about it because I think they're good things. It's how do you capitalize that? So hey, take your older housing stock, if your home's 25 or, or years or older and you decide that you're going to take on a re-cladding or re-siding project, maybe the city can match X up to Y. Something along those lines to help spur that investment because as really the premise of this, the beginning of this Thought Primer, disinvestment leads to disinvestment, investment leads to investment, right, in the community. So if you can just tip that ball down the hill, you know, that's, that's really beneficial for sustaining the, the property values of the older housing stock, the desirability of the older housing stock in the community over time. We'll add that into conversations about small business loans and grants and things that, you know, during COVID, you know, we, we found that we have some work to do on that over time. But this person needs to be somebody who can also what would you say, plot and plan and create a vision for how this thing can evolve. So, you know, it's a unique individual. It's a unique individual, I think, I said that a couple of times now, so.
Greg, anything else?
Then I guess the last comment would be just to reiterate something interesting that you said earlier. The first thing was that it's compliance is what is important, not necessarily penalties. So obviously education is key. But then you said how it, it fails without political backing. And as somebody who does this type of stuff for the state with gas stations and farmers throughout an area, nothing is worse than to have inspectors go out, give warnings, enforce things for that person to call somebody higher and say, well, they told me I can do that, that this is okay this time. And then the inspector is like, I did all that work for nothing and you're ultimately just letting it go to the wayside. So it's, it's going to be important to make sure that this person is backed fully by what they're doing.
Good point, Greg, very good point, thanks. Anything further, Greg?
No, that's all, thank you.
Steve?
Sorry if I missed this comment when I stepped out briefly, but I think one of the things that's kind of, I wouldn't say frustrated me over the years, but it's always kind of bothered me a little bit was when I had a complaint, I had to think about who, who in city government I had to call. And I didn't always get it right. Be, oh, you're that, you should be talking to this person, talking to that person. So I think nowadays I just kind of, I send it to Mike Simmons or Ted or somebody and just let them kind of farm it out to who they think it should go to. So having a central point of contact and to deal with everything. And I like the weed commissioner, you know, Ted's busy, maybe, you know, this would be a good job for this person to deal with that because that is one of the few departments I know who to call when, when the grass is two feet high and stuff like that. So, yeah, and, and we're talking about problem properties. I mean, we're just dealing with one problem property, I think number one started to be resolved today. And the city's been at that for about a decade, which involved time in municipal court and the city attorneys and stuff like that. So that was quite a labor intensive operation, so sounds like a good deal.
Rich?
Yeah, the, the question that I always had is why don't we have a better system in place? And certainly Doug and, and Andrew and, and the committee that has put the Creek Code together. That's, you've answered the question. I don't think anybody, any one of the electeds up here hasn't felt that frustration of trying to help a resident and you go, I don't know what to do, I've called, you know, the resident has shared with me. And then I go, I've called and you just feel simply powerless. So here is a tool, I mean, and it really seems well thought out, how you guys came up with this. So I just, I guess, using from examples in other communities, but this is incredible. I mean, that's a tool that we have to have to really kind of resolve the frustrations that we as elected officials feel, but that the residents feel as well. Nothing worse, I've gone through it a couple of times in my 25 years of living in Oak Creek, of that resident that doesn't take care of his property the way that we feel it should. And you go, what, what do you do? How there's, there's a process in place. So I'm thrilled to see, I mean, and Andrew, you mentioned it, this, this process is going to take time and will not be easy, but at least we now have something. And, and with that neighborhood preservation officer, I mean, Doug, we spoke briefly before the meeting started. Who do I talk to here, who do I talk, I mean, at least there, there, you know, there, there is a starting point. And it really kind of untangles that mess that's there of trying to get problems resolved. And, and honestly, I think we've all had experiences with neighbors and residents, constituents, proactive, you go out, you talk to those people beforehand, before big issues take place. And I think your chances for success and, and your chance of coming to resolution on a problem is better by being proactive rather than reactive. So I, I love this thing. And I know it's not, it, it's not. And, uh, I know it's not, it, it, it's not going to work perfectly for the first year, two, three, four, but at least my question has been answered. Why don't we have a better process in place? Thank you very much for out there. Starting point.
Okay, I'm gonna kind of wrap this up and I'm gonna make my, my process really short. Um, I probably take more complaints than anybody because once they call your district and they don't either A, hear back from you or get the answer they want, they call me. I go through the same process you did. I experienced it as an alderman. It is time in the evolution of the city to do this. At one time we had a part-time sanitarian, we now have a full-time sanitarian and these things grow as the city grew. This has been needed for a long time. This is not a Band-Aid program. This is a legacy program and it will be a viable, active part of this city and probably grow into its own, own in some way, shape or form into a department. So I think what you guys laid for the foundation of this is a really excellent start and I can't wait for this person to come on board. Because I have some phone calls I have to make this week to some people that aren't going to be very happy. And some of them are the second and third phone calls back on probably one of them hundred and sixteen that we're still working on. So again, thank you guys for all the hard work. Okay?
Just for some clarity, Dan, if I, if I may, mayor Dan. Um, I think, you know, we're talking about public education and valuing that. We're talking about a branded Coke, uh, campaign, the dashboard, that is pretty much pavilion. Uh, the citizen advisory panel though, I think is something if you guys wanted to sound off on that to just to, to, are we on the right track with the concept? Do you want us to play around a little more with ideas, maybe working with the mayor, uh, with the mayor to, to kind of flesh that out? Because Melissa, Attorney Carls will be bringing back kind of the, at least an initial attempt at the streamline of the codes and then this would have to be involved in that. So what do you think about that?
It's funny that you bring that up, my little mulcher. The citizen board makes this a fair process. And I don't know if it's just during election time, but I think the public is generally not trustful of, of what we do. And, and maybe we saw an example of that earlier with a, you know, with an upset resident. So that citizen board, I think ma- makes it a completely fair process and was glad that that was incorporated into this creek code system.
Okay.
Um, I, I think it's, yeah, critically essential to, to make people buy into this whole process because my neighbors are part of this process. Now, it's not, it's not the council or the mayor or community development because you guys do whatever you want to anyway. That's at times what the, what the feeling is out there. They, but my neighbors are on this, this is a system that I can believe in or that I can trust. So I think it's, I think it's a great part of the creek code process.
Something to add to that too, Rich, in the discussions we all had as a, you know, as a leadership group, the, um, the interaction with the municipal court eventually, uh, was, was important in the fact that we feel very comfortable that the judge is going to be cooperative in fact that there's a better process in place that it's gone to this kind of screening board. So when, if, with in fact, hopefully few will get to that, get to that point, hopefully there will be a result before that. But you'll actually have cooperation at the municipal level that this was edited, this was, this was gone through a process, this is, uh, something that needs to be dealt with and they will deal with it, deal with it effectively rather than, you know, it's kind of ad hoc, you know, kind of approach to things. So we, we feel very comfortable at the, at the core level, we'll have a, a lot better kind of process in place to deal with these when all of a sudden done.
No, I, I do think we're on the right path with, with the citizen board. Um, we just have to make sure the appointment, um, the individuals come from broad area of the city with broad perspective. Um, again, we don't, with, with great responsibility comes great power and we don't want abuse of that power or vengeance being sought on people for whatever. So I, it, it's going to be a difficult position as an appointee to do. So we just have to think about how that, that looks, that's all.
A group, you know, talking about it with our recruiter who I've known for 15 years and respect a lot, a former city manager. He said, you know, this is a really innovative idea because typically you have, and Doug and I have, in researching other communities, our management intern, I, I got curious and started watching some videos about this group in a community in Florida. They take this very seriously in certain communities around the country and Florida just happens to be one of those where they really take things seriously. I mean, they're judge, jury and executioner. I mean, they're setting fines, they're saying, you know what, it was a thousand dollars, but you got it done in 30 days, we'll knock it back to three hundred plus court, you know, almost court costs plus administrative costs. So this isn't that, but what our, uh, recruiting consultant said was this group, and you need to find those people who think that they're a resource for your staff, but also i- i- in a kind of an odd way, a resource for the resident. To, to come in and say, you know what, I, it, it, it is a violation. I just want, I just have to tell you that given what we see here, it does violate this code section now, you know, work with our staff member because all we want to do is work with you to get the problem. We don't want to be, um, you know, we don't want to be, you know, in a com- comber, uh, adversarial or combative type of a situation with anybody.
And I guess that's where I was going. You, you summed it up very well.
Kind of like similar reposa.
Similar.
Where you have a residence that can chime in and.
Well, we will, we will shoot this our best shot and just know that we're open to suggestions at any time along the way because it's, it's certainly probably going to remain imperfect, but we'll strive to strive for that continuous improvement year over year when we're looking at this program.
Uh, I think we're all very happy you're this far with it and there's actually, uh, a timeline to it now. So thank you again.
Thank you for your support.
Oh, thank you, guys.
Okay, everybody, uh, moving on, uh, we're at 12 and it's actually consideration of a resolution for a certified survey map by the F Street Development Group and the City of Oak Creek for some property, specifically at 4200 East Lake Vista Boulevard and 4001 East Lake Vista Boulevard.
Uh, th- thank, thank you. And, and without going into a whole lot of detail, I mean, it's familiar with the Lake Shore Commons project and, uh, the role that the city plays as property owner there and our partnership with the F Street Group. This certified survey map, uh, takes that, those parcels and re divides them as a prelude to the phase one sale from the city to F Street and also sets us up for, uh, future sale of phase two and a half. So this, this just kind of executes the, uh, the, the land division such that we can proceed to work towards, and we have been working on the financial agreement towards a, a closing on phase one of this project.
Thank you, Doug. Questions for Doug? Kind of straightforward on, on it. It's a good description. Seeing no questions, uh, motion on 12.
Mike Seppson, so I'll take that. Gail, move to approve resolution 12239 to 040521 approving a certified survey map submitted by F Street Development Group and City of Oak Creek for the properties at 4200 East Lake Vista Boulevard and 4001 East Lake Vista Boulevard.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And item 13 is public works and utility, in this consideration of a motion to approve, uh, the Rossen Avenue Water Main Extension, Extension Project and award contract to the lowest responsive bidder, IHC Construction, uh, based on the amount at $519,195. Um, do we have somebody with us from the utility? I don't see.
We don't have anybody from the utility, but if you have any questions, I'm sure Mike Simmons or myself could.
If there's any questions, Mike can do it. If not, uh, it all went out for bid and as the report said, lowest responsible is listed.
This is just over the threshold for the Board of Public Works and Capital Assets. If you recall, we set that at 500,000 for major, major utility projects, so.
So this is the first exercise in that coming to you.
In the CIP budgeted amount, it's 575, so.
We're in the ballpark, we're right there.
Yeah, ironically, uh, next bid, you see, was 50 bucks below that. Just throwing that out there for.
Well, any other questions, comments? Anything for Mike? We made him sit through the whole meeting.
No problem.
Okay, uh, if no further questions, um, motion on 13. Kowski, make a motion, council approve the Rossen Avenue Water Main Extension Project and award the construction contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, IHC Construction Companies LLC based on the bid amount of $519,195. Vocal second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
And item 14 is the license committee. I'll turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski. Thank you, mayor. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the common council report for tonight's meeting. Does anybody have any questions, cares or concerns? Seeing none, Kirkowski make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the April 5th, 2021 License Committee Report.
Next second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item 15 is our vendor summary report, uh, ending March 29th, 2020. Uh, please take a look. Any questions? We'll take it to the appropriate person. Rich?
Ooh, that jumped out at me. Um, and item number nine, 13,000 to the Milwaukee Area Domestic Animal Control for first quarter operating. Did we buy a dog or?
Oh, that, that's our, uh, that's Maddock and they do all our animal control countywide for us because we don't have our own Humane Society, so raccoon.
Probably 52,000 bucks a year for?
It's.
For animal control?
It, yes, probably.
I don't know what our budget is offhand, that seems a touch high.
Yeah, that, I mean.
But it's, it's tens of thousands of dollars.
It really is, but they come out.
It's never stuck out to me before like that.
They come out everything from an alligator to a zebra and, uh.
I'll, I'll let you know what the budget is for the year.
Yeah, and part of those costs include the licensing, they assist, I mean, we work with them, so there's a multitude. Um, if you ever want to see that breakdown, we can send that to you.
It just seemed unusual.
It, it is and, um, I think all the cities should, uh,
Okay.
Go into it, including Milwaukee. Uh, do you have a second one, Rich?
Yeah, the, uh, $69,000 for the, I don't know what we have to add here. Oh, number two, Medicare supplemental insurance.
Oh, retiree stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
That's our typical monthly expense?
It's a hunk of change. It was probably paid out March, it could be.
They usually pay it quarterly.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so this isn't a monthly.
No, this is ending March, the payments that went out that weekend in March 20.
I don't know, Max, Max is on if you wanted to see if he knows that. I'll, I'll put him on the front.
He'd know way better than me.
Well, that's. Max, are you there? Do you know if that's a quarterly invoice or not?
Um, so Max Gagan, that's the city administrator. Um, I don't know if that's a monthly or quarterly invoice. We'll look into it first thing tomorrow morning and get back to the common council.
Okay. I just, um, because on the report, it says the April retiree medical insurance, I'm going, leading it as it's posted to, to say that that's a monthly expense and I, I know we weren't, it wasn't that much. Okay, all right.
Of months, yeah.
Okay, those are my two questions.
Hey, anyone else? Uh, seeing none, motion.
Gail, move to approve the March 29th, 2021 Vendor Summary Report in the total amount of $612,076.31.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
And item 16 is consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, to discuss the following. Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, to discuss the proposed First Amendment to the Tax Increment District Number 12 Finance Development Agreement between the City of Oak Creek and the Oak Creek Hotel Ventures LLC for the property at 7700 South IKEA Way. President Gail?
Thank you, mayor. Gail, move to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, to discuss a proposed First Amendment to Tax Incremental District Number 12 Finance Development Agreement between the City of Oak Creek and Oak Creek Hotel Ventures LLC for the property at 7700 South IKEA Way.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
We'll now convene into closed session and resume at its conclusion. Thank you.
Fire won't be an issue, but you guys know the other one.
Hold on to both. What is right?
Okay, we will now consider a motion to reconvene into open session.
Gail, move to reconvene in open session.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And consideration of motion on action.
Thank you, mayor. Gail moves to approve the First Amendment to Tax Incremental District Number 12 Finance